Thank you.
Alfred, Alfred, what about you?
No, okay.
You guys have one of these?
I take it digital.
Oh, you said you take it.
Yeah.
We have to go for a primary. And hopefully, fight won't be bad price. And you're rocking that exactly. You can always help she. I was the.
No asterisk, you have asterisk. So what is?
Very funny.
Just waiting on city. Scissors, I got a pipe. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm mistaken. I hit you with the multi tool.
Thank you.
The whole book thing. Oh, you know what? I have no idea. Yeah, I have no idea. I left it up to my son. I mean, we need to upload some video somewhere. That's right. She wants the statistics.
What up, Bill? Walk off one job onto another.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Highland Park City Council in person and virtual workshop scheduled for today, Monday, June 3rd at 6:00 PM. Madam Deputy Kirk, would you be kind of call the role for us?
Councilman Ashafi. Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Manica. Councilperson Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Here, thank you very much. So for today's workshop, we have two items that are going to be discussed as the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's redevelopment-ready communities and the Highland Park Housing Community Limited Dividend Housing Association, LLC, Payment in Lue of Taxes, a pilot program. We have our Director of CED here to help walk us through the process and I will turn the floor over to Director Clyburn.
All right. Good evening. Hope everybody is well. Thank you. So the second item was asked to be brought back, so I'm gonna be brief on the first item so that we have time for the second. But the first item is the MEDC RRC program, which is the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Redevelopment Ready Communities. So sometime in 2018, the City of Highland Park did sign up for this program and it really hasn't taken any action. So I wanted to introduce this to the council because you'll be hearing more about it. You'll also be playing an active role in it. Now I get to that at the end. So I'm just kind of briefly summarize what it is. So the RRC is a voluntary technical assistance initiative offered through the MEDC. And again, RRC is redevelopment-ready communities and MEDC is Michigan Economic Development Corporation. The program is a statewide certification program that supports communities become development-ready and competitive in today's economy. Encourages to adapt innovative redevelopment strategies and efficient processes. And then empowers communities by building the foundation of planning, zoning, and economic development best practices. Through the program, local municipalities receive assistance to make them more attractive for investments that create places where people want to live, work, and play. Through the RRC best practices, communities build deliberate, fair, and consistent development processes from the inside out as well as strategic framework and benchmarks. The best practices include plans and public engagement, zoning, development review, boards and commissions, economic development strategy, and redevelopment-ready sites. So you've heard me talk about, and as you well know, we are in need of new processes, updating ordinances, getting development ready. So this program is right on time. When it talks about the boards and commissions, there are six that they are targeting and six that they work with. That's the City Council, Planning Commission, the Tifa Board, the BRA, the ZBA, and the Historic Commission. So for the City Council, they will want to come in, maybe set up a workshop, and they will talk to you and discuss development, you know, what's happening across the state. Where they come in, if you've got any questions or, you know, it's like a enhanced training, if you will, you know, where it'd be interactive between their professionals and this body to help bring everybody up to speed. And as we're building out this whole program and getting our processes together, you know, this mediator, if you will, to make sure everybody is kind of on the same page. Councilmember Ashafi, you know, you talk about the annual report from the Planning Commission. They specifically talk about helping the Planning Commission get a framework for that report and make sure it's turned in with everything they need. And they also take a look at our boards and commissions and see where we're strong, see where we need improvement. They come in and help train, and these are all resources they provide. There's grants, I mean, as you move up through the processes, grants and everything available to help us do a lot of these things and even grants to help us with development. So again, this is just introductory. We'll schedule something. I did the initial survey. They're putting together a report. It'd be done by next week. So then I'll reach out for Council President, set something up, you know, to get a date where it may be at a workshop or it may be something in between meetings so they could come in and we can take our time and go through what's happening and where we ought intend to go. So we get ready for development. Any questions that I can answer? Good, good, good. Let's save them for the MEDC. But I'm excited about it and it's something we already in the system. We're already in the system. We just haven't taken any steps. So now we're taking the steps to get certified.
Floor is still yours, sir.
Okay, oh, cool. Okay, item two. So a couple of months, the last month, at the beginning of the month, we had a workshop to introduce the pilot. And I just kind of want to, from an administrative standpoint, say that we are in support of this pilot. A couple of things to stand out as to why is because currently we're receiving nothing. And with the pilot, we reserve, we see like seventy-five thousand a year. It's a substantial investment in our housing stock. They're talking about investing seventy thousand per unit for eight existing sites, which is a hundred and sixty total units. And that's a huge investment into the community. No existing resident will be permanently displaced because of the rehabilitation. And residents will not experience a rent increase. A rent for all units have been set at or above sixty percent AMI adjusted for family size. They're gonna be paying water and sewage. And, you know, they also received final approval for some demolition that they put in back in 2016. So all these things are happening right now. And this is, this is a good partnership. And we feel like it's something that we should be taking a serious look at. So you did get the documents. Hopefully you had time to review them because I got the team in to answer questions. And I'm gonna pass the floor to.
Yeah, I got a question for you right up.
For me or for them?
Well, just in general.
Okay.
And you can answer this too. So if I'm not mistaken, this, this ordinance is going to target all future low-income housing developments or just the ones under.
Just the ones that are set, the hundred and sixty units.
Okay, okay.
Good evening, friends. Thank you for having us back. We did bring an extra copy of the binder from last month. Happy to share with the team here. Friends, in addition to the upcoming renovation, Van Fox, President MHT Housing. Friends, in addition to the recognition of the tax credit renovation, please note and recognize we are doing a substantial renovation in addition to the upcoming. Right now, we are looking at demolition of what is vacant, knowing that it will be rebuilt at later date that we're looking to first close on the existing transaction with MISTHA, the State Housing Development Authority, followed up to start meeting with the administration to recognize another phase for a family and senior new affordable housing within the city limits. Friends, we're no stranger to Highland Park. We have been in Highland Park for over thirty years. And this will be a continuation of our mission of providing housing to families at or below the sixty percent annual median income of Wayne County. Friends, we are shovel-ready with our environmentals, our title work, our financing. We are looking to close at or before the next probably ninety days to recognize that there will be no displacement of any resident who lives with us. Please note and recognize we have a multiple-year waitlist to move in to the Highland Park Housing Commission Development. Please recognize is that there will be a new board of Highland Park Housing Commission that the City Council will be appointing that this public-private partnership recognizes that my organization will be taking on one hundred percent of the guarantees, the financial management, knowing that there are both weekly, monthly, quarterly, yearly audits and reporting both to the state, to the federal government, MISTHA, HUD, our investors who are buying the credits. Yes, sir.
So Mr. Fox, I wanted to just pause for a minute to let the citizens that are home watching know what's on the screen. This is a AMI chart provided by Wayne County. It's, they come out every year. This is the one from May of 2023. And it shows, this first image shows at the top, income based on individuals. So his target here was sixty percent AMI. I just wanted people in the community to understand what that looks like. That's around forty thousand dollars for a single person, forty-five thousand dollars for two people, fifty thousand dollars for three people, fifty-six thousand dollars for four people. If, as you see, these are reduced numbers. The standard area median income from metro Detroit, for Wayne County, is close to a hundred thousand dollars if we average all the communities in together. I just wanted to make sure and provide that because a lot of people I just wanted to make sure and provide that because a lot of people who might be watching, they don't necessarily know what AMI, the area median income is, so I just wanted to let them know. They can get this from Wayne County. You can get a download that shows the area median income. This document will be adjusted for 2024, so there might be a three to five percent increase on what these base numbers are. But for those people in the community who want to know what that means, affordable housing means people who make regular wages and assuming the vast majority of people, the median income is fifty-six thousand dollars a year.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
And please do note that no more than thirty percent of your income at any time will be spent above while you live with us your entire duration, no more than thirty percent. It will still maintain one hundred percent affordability. So there will be no displacement. There will be no irregularity, knowing that everybody will receive same improvement. Everybody will be treated same with appliances, cabinetry, flooring. We just recently completed two new elevators, new high-rise roof. Everybody will receive central air conditioning. I might recommend that for City Hall. Friends, we are doing new windows and door walls physically right now onsite. New fire suppression system will be happening, fire stops, and it's just going to be a complete transformation of what was to now what is. Yes, ma'am?
This, the floor is open. This is the workshop. This is the classroom, so go for it.
My first question is, Mr. Fox, you are currently receiving tax exemptions for rent, right?
Right now, there is zero tax being paid. Right now, we're asking to go up to the five percent payment in lieu of tax.
So I guess what I'm saying is, I just want to know, currently you already have tax exemptions, so you're not paying taxes?
Correct.
If you were, do you know what that tax would be?
I do not. It's a very, it would be a very complicated formula if there was no payment in lieu of tax to take it to market, because we recognize the deep income targeting. Therefore, it would be unrealistic that a developer would come in to provide the deep income targeting, knowing that there is no protection to provide affordable housing.
Maybe, Mr. Fox, if you could expand on that. Again, the average person, and we haven't seen a development here in, you know, twenty years. So it might require just to kind of tease out the part that you were just mentioning there. And for the citizens, communities who have resources, tax credits, they incentivize developers to come in and build the infrastructure that the community would need, for you name it, for housing, for other aspects of American infrastructure. But specifically on real estate development, it's almost a lose-lose for a developer to contribute a significant amount of money upfront with the knowledge that their tenants are never going to be able to pay market rate, and market rate is twice what is being asked here with the sixty, sixty percent AMI. So if you could-
So I do want to understand that. So, and I hear him. What I guess would, the more into the question is you already own it because you bought it from HUD. You bought property in Hamilton and Grand, property on John R., right? The senior building that's on John R. Am I in the right place?
Okay, let me put it in reverse to answer your question in full, so that way there's no confusion. Is that cool?
Well, I'm asking, you own those properties right there, right?
Okay, right now, we own the Gabriel Apartments, Benjamin Manor, Glendale Buena Vista, and Highland Manor. Please do note that they are fully current with rental registration, water sewer, stormwater, and pilot amounts, pilot payments. Please recognize that we have formed a partnership through HUD to co-develop with the Highland Park Housing Commission to redevelop with a public-private partnership with the HUD and state approval to redevelop the Highland Park Housing Commission portfolio. So once we close into our new transaction, our organization would come in as a co-partner-
A co-partner with?
The Highland Park Housing Commission.
Do you have any point?
Correct. We need to start working to work with the mayor and the council approval of who to appoint to the new board of directors for the Highland Park Housing Commission.
So, if we, somebody, the Highland Park Housing Commission, I run by you.
Right now, we are the acting director through HUD. Right now, we are the acting management company through HUD to manage the day-to-day operations to get us into the sale, knowing that the Highland Park Housing Commission will maintain an ownership, that they will get the first right of refusal back at a later date, knowing that the council is going to appoint new members to the board of the Highland Park Housing Commission. I'm not trying to use fancy language to-
My question is just real simple.
I don't own it yet.
What you're doing is you're adding to what I'm asking, and I don't have a problem. What I'm saying to you is what I'm asking, because my understanding, you no longer, of course, HUD left us a long time.
Correct.
That was with the housing commission that we had. So if you don't have anyone in the housing commission, you can't, you can't say until we do. And we appoint the housing commission. You do not have control of the housing commission, or is this going to give you control over the housing commission?
This pilot does not give me control over the housing commission. Right now, HUD has taken control of the housing commission, and at later date, will be turning that control over, partial control over to the housing commission, knowing that our organization will be a partner with the housing commission. So right now, HUD has complete control of the asset. I technically work for HUD. We're going to have an upcoming sale of the property into a new partnership with the HUD and M I S T A approval. With that HUD and M I S T A approval, there will be an appointed board to the Highland Park Housing Commission by city council to then represent the activities of the Highland Park Housing Commission. Right now, the existing board has been disbanded by HUD, and then it will be put back in place.
And, Mr. Fox, I just wanted, to people who are not familiar, a lot of information is not shared on this side of government with the public. So what I'm doing is trying to make sure that we, as much as we can with the help of CD Director and yourself, push the information out there. Our former housing commission was reprimanded and control was taken away from them. Am I correct?
Correct.
They did some impropriety with the previous board of the housing commission, and the body doesn't disappear. The body once formed exists, but it has to have a governing structure. And the governing structure was removed because of impropriety with the previous members of the board. Is that a, is that a fair assessment? So now, the entity still exists. The entity still has assets. The entity was the custodian of those properties with the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And since we didn't have a governing body, they looked for a manager, if you will, and that is your organization that came in.
Correct.
With your experience in this area, you became the oversight or the consultant that managed that portfolio of property for housing. And so now, correct me if I'm wrong, what they're doing now is they're taking an existing body in the form of a Highland Park Housing Commission and this professional entity with experience managing property, and they're coming up with a new company or a new organization that will be responsible for managing all of the, the real estate products in that portfolio. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. To that, Ms. Manica, I think I get what you're trying to say, because you're trying to, how do we have an airplane if there's no pilot in it? You know, how are we, how does it exist without there being anyone in there? And so I just only did a little bit of cursory information, and I just wanted to make sure that we were verifying those facts. The property is still owned by the Highland Park Housing Commission, which is a part of this city.
Correct. Thank you very much, Ms. Manica.
The floor is open. Go right ahead.
Okay. So you have this, this development that's coming. I, I heard you use a word called public-private partnership. I'm curious as to which part of this deal is going to be public and which part's private?
I'm referencing the public-private partnership as the Highland Park Public Housing Commission, as the public park, with me as the private.
Okay, okay. So would it be like, okay, so your particular development, you want to put in here, how many homes did you say again?
There will-
How do you carry these down? I'm looking at, hold on a second. I was just reading it and saying, a hundreds. Yeah, a hundred and sixty townhouses? Yeah, yeah, units. What was that? I was just reading.
Correct. There will be the redevelopment of that existing hundred and sixty townhomes slash the five-story tower. Then, at a later date, a replacement of forty new construction to recognize that the forty new represent the demolition.
Okay, okay. It says, it says forty-one here.
Or forty-one, my apologies.
So, so those would be forty-one, you know, new houses, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I asked the question, I ask, because there used to be a really nice program that came through here, and it came through here one time, and we haven't seen it again, because there was abuse of that program. And that would be the NSP two program. So I want to ask you, is there a restriction that HUD is placing on who could qualify for these homes? Is there a restriction for that?
The replacement housing would have the M I S T A restrictions.
Okay, okay. So, so the M I S T A restrictions are clear. No city employees or elected officials would be able to operate or occupy anyone of these homes?
They would have to income-qualify, but there would be no ownership. There would be no participation as co-developer. This would be a participation, again, with the Highland Park Housing Commission and M H T, but no, I don't follow.
That question, because we got into trouble before with M I S T A. And when they found out that, that there were people who were employees or elected officials that occupied a house that they shouldn't have got, which was against the rules, we had to pay back over a half a million dollars back to them to get them off our back. They wanted their money back immediately, and they were not playing with it somebody.
Yeah, that, that, no, I cannot violate, because I have a regulatory agreement that I have to adhere to by the state and the Fed.
Okay, that's why I asked the question.
Okay.
What were, you know, the restrictions? You know, to make sure that the people who deserve those houses actually get those out.
Correct.
And it doesn't end up in the hands of somebody that really doesn't qualify. I mean, if I'm making seventy grand a year-
Sorry, you're not eligible.
I don't qualify, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. If I'm making, if I'm making seventy grand a year and after taxes, it's fifty-some thousand a year, I don't qualify, right? I'm making too much, right?
Right.
Okay, okay. So that's all I had to ask.
I mean, I'm happy for your success, but no.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, because, you know, we have a tendency to forget that fact. You know, you know, people have taken advantage of systems like this that have come in before, and we just don't want to see it again, because we all want to pay out again, okay?
Twenty-four years living here, I've only seen one instance of that. Ms. Manica, go ahead, please.
So in a second, we talked about the streamline voluntary, so where are we going to go with vouchers, right?
So the, so it can be a pinch tricky, but please recognize that there are residents with the ability who might state, hey, I don't want to be here. I don't want to live here. They can then be in receipt of a portable voucher that they can take anywhere. But the likeliness of them wanting to leave, recognizing the renovation, they will stay put, and then HUD will issue a new twenty-year hap contract, a new contract for affordability for twenty years for payment on that unit on this development. So you have the option to pack and move, but the likelihood of that is very remote. But there has been ongoing communication with the residents for that opportunity.
So with the voucher, and I don't take the voucher, or I decide I want to pack.
You stay permanently.
Say again?
You would stay permanently if you don't want to pack and move.
Right, but if I don't want to pack it, and I stay permanently, I can stay for twenty years.
Or longer, yes. Just our initial contract with HUD is for twenty years. That's their subject annual appropriations.
Years with that same rental rate?
Yes.
It's always sixty percent of AMI.
Yep, and you'll never pay more than thirty percent of your income, correct?
So it's based on my income?
Yes. The average household median income who lives with us now is right around thirteen thousand dollars a year. It's very tight.
That's like fifteen, ten, fifteen percent AMI. The floor is open, Madam Proton.
So this paper right here says you have eight, that's a total of one hundred.
Occupied. Are there eight occupied, Ms. Blood?
The eight that are there are the eight buildings that they have a hundred and sixty units.
Are they occupied?
They're all occupied.
So how many do you have that are occupied, or do you want to?
So let's say, I just come with that number, let's say that there's a turn of five, five families moved out of those hundred and sixty units. They're available to be leased at this point in time. And they're being renovated as they're made. When they're leased right now, they would be public housing. When the streamline is completed, they too will have a right to- Or they stay where they are and, and they continue to pay thirty percent under the project they come from. So eight properties equal a hundred and sixty units. No displacement at any though. All occupied except for the laws of term, where people moving out will be finishing.
So are any of these real?
They are. The bound manor is identified as a senior building. It is not classified as a senior by HUD. We're working on that classification. It's known as a family building, but ninety-nine percent of the occupants are sixty years in labor, and we hope to keep it.
So how many of, do you have in the database?
So at this point in time, it's a hundred and sixteen. This is not a new development for rehab of those hundred and sixty. In the portfolio are also some vacant single-family homes and duplexes, a total of forty-one units. Those units, two things will happen. Twelve will be demolished because we have a pool in funding two thousand and sixteen. The others who go up for sale, if they are sold, we have to work on what to do with their land, or the goal is to replace those forty-one units with new development.
Okay, so on the screen, for the people who are at home and the people in the audience, those purple squares represent the portfolio of the housing commission. There are forty-one single-family homes and the one multi-unit development up there. This is the representation across our city. I could expand it up a little bit to make it easier for you to see, but when you consider that, this is what we're talking about. I'll make it sort of to pitch the screen. This is the housing commission. This is what's owned by the City of Highland Park, so we're going to keep that in perspective. Okay, that's the treasurer of the City of Highland Park. So we're talking about a very small amount. They're going to do a significant heavy lift on forty-two units. They're going to spend millions of dollars of rehabbing these properties. They stay in the, in the city. They don't go anywhere. So they'll improve the housing stock and also improve the quality of lives for those individuals who live there. Again, this tool for people who are home, this is Regrid. It's a free website. You can go and you can find out as much as you like about property ownership. Just to put it in perspective, this is the City of Highland Park. This is what the state land bank, the Wayne County Land Bank owns in our area with these purple squares. State land bank. And again, comparing what is owned by the representation of purple boxes to what Highland Park Housing Commission owns is a very small amount. So it's going to be concentrated effort, real high concentration. Owns is a very small amount, so it's going to be concentrated effort, real high concentration effort. And the investment of funds to improve the general housing stock in that area. And everything next to them will also get the benefit of having its value increase as they make these investments in those properties. Floor is still open, if anyone else had anything. Thank you so much, uh, Mr., Mr. Manica, for giving us an opportunity.
I got, I got, uh, I got one thing that I want to say before you leave. You know, I, I. I know that my colleagues, they may feel I'm being overdramatic, they, they may not take what I say seriously. But this city has had a bad habit and a bad history of mismanaging everything that's come its way. So I need you to do your due diligence on your part to make sure that the people who are supposed to get those homes. End up with those homes. No favors, no handouts. I'm a big believer in no favors. You do a person a favor one time, it never ends. So stay due diligent, make sure that the people who deserve the house, get the houses and everybody else can, can, can simply foul. Or, or fall off to the wayside. Thank you, sir.
Understood, thank you.
I do have two other things. One, I think at some point I heard you say it will stop the tax exemption. You know how long?
Um, I, I'm not certain if I said that.
You didn't say it that way.
Okay, this would be during the duration of the mortgage with MISTDA. So we would be looking at a thirty-five-year term. Once I either pay off the MISTDA mortgage. Or go elsewhere, then I have to come back to this committee, to the council. Whether it's in one year, two year, five year, ten year, fifteen year, I have to come back to you. Because this pilot is in the name of this partnership. Into the Limited Dividend Housing Association.
So you're giving us, you're proposing to give the city, how much?
Uh, minimally, year one, eighty-five thousand dollars. That's most conservative right there.
Year two?
Uh, year two, in your binder tab eight, that is all identified. I can pass you that page here. That is identified for your budgets, recognizing a vacancy. Conservative vacancy of eight percent. But I would anticipate that on average over a fifteen-year period. That we would be approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per year in taxes.
Is that your starting year two?
Uh, yes, ma'am. No, no, on average, correct, over the fifteen-year duration.
Mr. Fox, is this, uh, lighted?
Correct, yes.
Four or nine percent?
Four.
Okay, so it's not competitive, which is great, which is great. That's low-income housing, tax credit financing, which is very difficult to get and they are, they're going to basically have to crawl. Headfirst through a needle to be able to get that approved and it's going to be raked over the coals by everyone. Um, so if they get that approved, that approval is.
I'm sorry, what was the percentage?
Five percent and currently it is at zero.
That's optimal.
No, the actual mortgage. Is right around six point eight five percent. Total development cost here is around thirty-five million. That's with the renovation, the miscellaneous reserves. Um, the hard cost of construction improvements, yes.
Well, I, I'm just putting it in pretty much latest time, trying to make sure. You, being MHT.
Yes, ma'am.
Is replacing. Pretty much, you're replacing.
Correct.
Partnering with Highland Park Commission that we're going to adopt, we're going to appoint.
Mm-hmm.
And then you're creating a Highland Park Housing Community Limited Dividend.
Housing Association.
Housing Association, LLC.
And in that partnership, there's two owners, the Highland Park Housing Commission and MHT as a partnership.
So if we're partnering, we're partnering because you're going to spend your money. You're going to do the loan or the mortgage. You're going to pay it back.
Correct, I'm a hundred percent on the hook. I have insulated the housing commission, knowing that the cash flow splits are sixty, forty. I'm sixty, they're forty.
And currently, how do people get into those housing places now? Because we don't use vouchers. So now we're going to start using vouchers.
You get on the waitlist. You come to visit office at Downs Manor.
Right.
And you will get on the waitlist. And you will be appropriately tracked, identified, given receipt, number, where you stand on that waitlist. And if you are on the waitlist there, maybe Gabrielle will have something, or Highland Manor will have something, et cetera. We will do our best, whether it's in the city of Detroit or surrounding communities, to provide some short-term while you're on the waitlist.
Mr. Fox, uh, whose vouchers are these, county or state?
Oh, any taxes and water or any of these properties.
No, never have, always current.
Now, I just want to get a question, who's, who will be the, uh, body providing, we don't have this infrastructure Detroit does, that we get, these are county vouchers or state vouchers?
Um, they will be federal.
So they'll be, okay. Okay.
Managed through MISTDA, but.
Okay. Okay, excellent.
But if they don't want to leave, if you want to be developed or you want to tear down where you're staying, really you want to be developed, where are you going to house?
Most recently, we just moved five families who were in a bad situation. Just down the street on Woodward and Gladstone into four-bedroom units, two full baths on Woodward and Gladstone. So most recently, we moved those families, the five families last February. Into, and we're in process with Detroit Housing Commission to project base those units. So we, uh, took care of their furnishings, we successfully moved them at our expense and we relocated them appropriately. If there is any relocation because the, um, facilities might be so, uh, poor. Knowing that we already have an existing vacancy in those units that are expected to be demolished or replaced at later date. We will be appropriately working on a relocation plan to their liking.
The commission could not support them, there was no housing for them. So they were moved to Gladstone, um, paying thirty percent of the rent, everything. And they will qualify when the vouchers come. They will qualify to get a bus through these locations, or if they stay Gladstone because that's a preference or large family. They will be project-based, but again, they're only paying thirty percent of their income.
Was that what they were paying for?
Yes, thirty, so yes.
So it's going to stay?
It's going to stay. So the only way that income goes up in these programs, even the voucher program, is if your income goes up. So it's always maxing out at thirty percent of your income. Based upon where you choose. How a family chooses to move somewhere else. They go at the goal of thirty percent of their income, but they're looking at markets. Where what, what we have here is units that we know the families will all increase their income. If you move with the voucher in the second year and the landlord increases the rent, fifty, fifty percent, sixty percent. If you move, it's not.
So the units that you deal, they will be afforded to them. There aren't going to be any unit that would be unaffordable to them.
And coincident.
None of the families will be harmed on this. The whole goal is to keep our, our families that are occupied in buildings. Best our ability, showing them how we're developing their lives and their homes, that they take very successful.
And coincidentally, for the next forty-five years, there will be a federal and a state mandate to maintain that. One hundred percent affordability to the thirty percent AMI for forty-five years for all units.
So they've already been moved, so we've already started this process.
No, the five that moved. You know, the five that moved had nothing to do with the streamline or this activity. And the streamline hasn't even been approved or, or the redevelopment, that's why we're here. Those five were moved under an emergency basis. We had to find a home for those families and children. Um, we worked with the Detroit Housing Commission, we worked with MISTDA, we worked with HUD. To find a solution for those five, those families, because they were in single-family homes. In a hundred and sixty units that we have, there are no large units, there are no units with more than three bedrooms. And these were families that were in single-family homes that had, uh, six children, eight children. We had to find a home for them. So they were, and they are still in the equation of a hundred and sixty, they're just living at Gladstone. And only paying their portion. They will be treated as fairly and in the same as somebody who lived in now.
And so last thing, I think this is to progress and they, I'm not sure, the tax exemption ordinance?
The draft tax exemption ordinance is listed as exhibit two. That is to the state guidelines. That is the state-recognized payment in lieu of tax.
So you're asking us to approve to?
To move forward.
That you brought.
Correct. We, we would happily work with your in-house legal. We would happily work with, to bring in MISTDA at next meeting. But this right here is, um, state mandated, right here. Your attorney would be able to immediately recognize Public Act three forty-six.
He's going to go to, right? I think that's all my questions.
Ms. Manica, thank you very much for your thoroughness. Yes, ma'am.
That's the only voucher?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, no, that's correct, that's correct, AR. No, we don't count on that anymore, but that's what they are.
Okay.
Additional questions? Anything you want to leave us in closing with?
Hey, we're stoked. Thank you for having a continuation. We're going to be coming back to you. Probably in about six months for the Gabrielle and Highland Manor redevelopment. We're going to be reinvesting, uh, heavily back into those two facilities. Um, it's been fifteen years since we've last, uh, done an improvement and we'll be doing same again. And I look forward to be working with the city of Highland Park on the replacement housing of forty-one. New homes and I'm going to be, um, back here much sooner than later. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I know I say that, I have a little.
No, no. Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure I have the, the places right, engine of that.
Yes, ma'am. We don't own Downs Manor yet. That's under partnership. Once we close with MISTDA on the new bonds, then we would become co-developer, co-owner.
Did I miss a place that you already have?
Uh, Gabrielle, Highland Manor, Benjamin Manor, and the Glendale Buena Vista.
And so Downs Manor and the one of Rand, is that it? Are you still trying to purchase that too?
That's under our partnership.
And what's the one of Rand called, I'm sorry?
Is that Tuxedo?
So here's a listing of them. There's Grand, there's Hamilton, second, third, we call, that's one, and then we have Tuxedo. These are the Highland Park Housing Commission units. They are not the, the current ones that Mr. Fox.
These are not the ones they own, yes. Those are Highland Park Housing. Just Highland Park Housing.
Yes, ma'am.
It's only three.
Uh. Gabrielle.
Oh, that's one.
Yes, three hundred and thirty-six units, both senior and family on Hamilton between second and third.
And are you looking to acquire this one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight other places?
Yes, ma'am, that's part of our renovation. And that was on the cover sheet of the binder and I'll leave this binder here with you too. Okay. No, we're just managing and there's a lot of activity ongoing right now with concrete, asphalt roofs, et cetera. I know, isn't that nice? Yes, hey, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Um, CD Director, you good? Okay, we have just a couple of minutes before Good and Welfare. We keep it short so we can take a break between the next meeting. Anything? District three, anything for Good and Welfare? Um, District one, anything for Good and Welfare? Still have council affairs in the next session.
No, I guess. Uh, this is to my council members, not to the audience per se. I would like to take a look at. Housing localization and appliance rebates, five oh one, two, three. And the other one is going to be home efficiency rebate, five oh one.
And this is where?
Those are, um.
Okay, so rebate, okay. Will do. Okay, Madam Proton, anything for Good and Welfare? Okay, nothing for Good and Welfare from the chair either, so we will declare this meeting adjourned at six forty-nine.